Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Johnson Memorial Hospital has filed an application for a certificate of need seeking to establish a new outpatient surgical facility. And in the process of doing that, terminate its existing Johnson Surgical Center from its hospital license. The new ambulatory surgery center will be located adjacent to the existing facility. The total estimated capital expenditure for the proposal is seventeen point eight million dollars. Today is May twenty second, twenty twenty four. My name is Daniel Chuka. OHS Executive Director Deidre Gifford has authorized OHS General Counsel Anthony Casagrande to designate hearing officers for CON matters, and he has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this one. To rule on all motions and to recommend findings of fact and conclusions of law upon completion of the hearing. This hearing is being held online only utilizing the Zoom video conference platform as authorized by Connecticut Connecticut General Statute, section one dash two two five A. In accordance with the statute, any person who participates orally in an electronic meeting should make a good faith effort to state his or her name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during an uninterrupted dialogue or series of questions and answers. We ask that all members of the public mute the device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. This public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, section nineteen A dash six thirty nine A sub F sub two. Although this does not constitute a contested case under the Uniform Administrative Procedure Act, the manner in which OHS conducts these proceedings will be guided by the UAPA provisions and the regulations of Connecticut State Agencies beginning at nineteen A dash nine dash two twenty four. Although I will be asking the majority of questions today, Office of Health Strategy staff is also here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application and may also be asking the applicant witnesses questions. At this time, I'm going to ask each staff person with me to identify themselves with their name, spelling of their last name and OHS title, and we will start with Steve.
Good morning, Stephen Lazarus, L A Z A R U S, and I'm the C O N program supervisor.
Thank you. Annie?
Good morning, Annie Faiella, F A I E L L A, and I am the C O N team lead.
Thank you. And Nicole? Nicole, if you're talking, we can't hear you. There you are. No?
I don't think your audio is working.
Okay, so that's Nicole Tomczuk, T O M C Z U K. And I'm not sure what her actual title is.
Planning analyst.
Okay. So Nicole, maybe you can log off and try to resolve your your audio issues and then come back and join us, but we're going to proceed. So also present is our office's paralegal Fay Fentes, who is assisting with the hearing logistics, gathering of the names in public comment and providing miscellaneous other support. The C O N process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicant, members of the app, members of the public and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decor must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. This hearing is being transcribed and recorded, and the video will also be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to OHS are available for review through our C O N portal, which is accessible on the OHS C O N webpage. In making my decision, I will consider and make written findings of fact in accordance with section nineteen A dash six thirty nine of the Connecticut General Statutes. Lastly, as Zoom notified you in the course of entering this hearing, I wish to point out that by appearing on camera in this virtual hearing, you are consenting to being filmed. If you if you wish to revoke your consent, please do so at this time by exiting the Zoom meeting. So the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to start by going over the exhibits and the items of which I am taking administrative notice, and then I will ask if there are any objections. The C O N portal contains the pre-hearing table of record. In this case, at the time of its filing on Monday, exhibits were identified in the table from A to R. I saw this morning that Attorney DiBassio filed a motion that we requested be filed as as well as an affidavit. I haven't had an opportunity to review that, but those documents will be made part of the record, so those will be S and T respectively. Going to start with the OHS side, Steve, Annie, Nicole, do you have any additional exhibits to enter into the record at this time?
Not at this time. Thank you.
No, thank you.
And presumably Nicole would say no if she were here. I'm not aware of any other exhibits that we plan to enter at this time. The applicant is hereby noticed that I am taking administrative notice of the following documents. The statewide healthcare facilities and services plan and its supplements. The facilities and services inventory. The OHS acute care hospital discharge database. All payer claims database claims data. And hospital reporting system, that's HRS financial and utilization data. To the extent that we rely on any of those for purposes of coming to a decision, an excerpt will be provided and the applicant will have an opportunity to respond. At this time, I don't think that we have provided any excerpts, so there's nothing to respond to at this time. I'm also planning to take administrative notice of the following dockets. Docket number twenty two dash three two four eight six dash C O N, which is the docket for the civil penalty proceeding against Johnson Memorial Hospital relating to its termination of labor and delivery services. I don't think there's anything that I'm going to have to use from that, but out of an abundance of caution, I wanted to make reference to it. As well as docket number twenty two dash three two six one two dash C O N. And that's the docket for Johnson Memorial Hospital seeking authorization to terminate labor and delivery services. I have already provided a portion of that, have provided the hearing transcript from that. I believe that is the only portion of that docket that will we will be needing to refer to. So you have that in the record. I may also take administrative notice of other prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements and determinations that may be relevant to this matter, but which have not yet been identified. Counsel for the applicant, Attorney DiBassio, can you please identify yourself?
Yes, good morning, hearing officer. My name is David DiBassio. That's D E B as in boy, A S S I O, from the law firm of Hinckley Island on behalf of Johnson Memorial Hospital.
Thank you. And do you have any objections to the exhibits in the table of record or the entering of those two exhibits that I indicated were filed this morning by email?
No, not at all, and I apologize for the late filing on the motion to seal the affidavit. We had technical issues with preparing the documents to be Bates and Mark pursuant to the rules of procedure, which necessitated filing this morning.
Not a problem. I don't expect that there will be any questions on those. I just wanted them for completeness purposes. I will, I will, of course, reserve the right to potentially hold another hearing date in the event we need it. But again, I don't think that'll be needed.
No, thank you. You you anticipated my next statement that we do understand, given the late filing, that OHS, when they get a chance to review those documents, may want a brief subsequent hearing, to which we have no objection.
Okay. And as you indicated in your letter, that will probably mostly be conducted in executive session, given the nature of the documents. Assuming we we find that they are subject to the confidentiality that that you have indicated that they are. So all identified and marked exhibits are anterior to this full exhibits then. Do you have, Attorney DiBassio, do you have any additional exhibits that you wish to enter at this time?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and we will proceed in the order established in the agenda for today's hearing. I do want to start by advising the applicant that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about your proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have reviewed your application, your completeness responses, prefiled testimony and so on. And I will do so again many times before issuing a decision. Anyone attending today should enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting remotely during the proceedings. However, all participants in the public should mute their devices and should disable their cameras when we go off the record and take a break. Please be advised that although we will try to shut off the hearing recording during breaks, it may continue. If the recording is on, any audio or video that has been has not been disabled will be accessible to all participants. Public comment, if there is any, will be taken during the hearing and will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, I may allow for public officials to testify out of order. I or OHS staff will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. And registration for public comment will begin at eleven and continue to twelve. If the technical portion of the hearing has not been completed by twelve, public comment may be postponed until the technical portion is complete. The applicant's witnesses must be available after public comment, as OHS may have additional follow up questions based on the public comment. Attorney DiBassio, are there any other housekeeping matters or procedural issues that you would like to address before we start?
No, thank you.
Thank you. So moving on. Do you have an opening statement that you would like to present?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, I'm going to reserve most of my comments for my closing statement because I want to be respectful of OHS, my client and the public's time. I would just like to say that it's a privilege to be here before OHS again representing Johnson Memorial Hospital. With me today is Deborah Bitzoli, the President of Trinity Health of New England Medical Group and Trinity Health of New England Clinically Integrated Network. We also have Dr. Robert Roos, the President of Johnson Memorial Hospital. We have Claudio Capone, the Vice President of Strategy of Business Development for Trinity Health of New England. Ms. Bitzoli will start us off by adopting her prefiled testimony, and as you yourself referenced, Your Honor, a lot of this is is going to be duplicative of the information that's already part of the record contained in the application itself and the prefiled answers to questions that OHS has posed to us. But we're going to be repeating a lot of it just to get it on the public record. And then, as I mentioned, Dr. Roos and Mr. Capone are here to answer any financial or technical questions OHS may have once Ms. Bitzoli has adopted and submitted her prefiled testimony.
Thank you. I'm going to have the three individuals who you identified, Ms. Bitzoli, Dr. Roos and Mr. Capone raise the right hand, and I'm going to swear you in. Please, so do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you provided in your profile and the evidence that you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God or upon penalty of perjury?
I do.
Yes.
And let the record reflect that Mr. Capone also answered affirmatively, but he was unmuted. So Ms. Bitzoli, when giving your testimony, please make sure to adopt any written testimony that you have already submitted. And you can proceed whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, thank you and good morning, everybody. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak this morning. So my name is Deborah Bitzoli. I will spell it's B as in boy, I T S as in Sam, O L I. And again, appreciate the time this morning. So I am the President of the Trinity Health Medical Group, as well as the President of the Trinity Health Clinically Integrated Network. Johnson is a member hospital of Trinity Health of New England, which is an integrated healthcare delivery system that's a member of Trinity Health based out of Livonia, Michigan. So as I said, we appreciate the opportunity this morning to testify in support of the certificate of need application for the termination of hospital license at Johnson Surgical Center and concurrently for the establishment of an outpatient surgical center. Johnson Memorial is seeking approval to convert its four operating room licensed surgery center located at one forty eight Hazard Avenue in Enfield, Connecticut from a hospital-based outpatient department to a freestanding outpatient surgical facility located adjacent to the existing site. Technically, there are no services being terminated in the market, just the replacement of the hospital outpatient department surgery center with an ambulatory surgery center designation that will allow us to provide additional services. My testimony today will focus largely on how approving this application will better meet the needs of the community as well as patients overall. This will include improving access to low cost, high value surgical care. In my capacity as President of the Medical Group of Trinity Health of New England, I was also consulted and participated in the decision to seek the termination of the hospital license at Johnson Surgical Center and concurrently for the establishment of the outpatient surgical center itself. As I will discuss further in the testimony, it was a decision that was ultimately driven by quality of care for the patients, the residents of the community, and really ensuring the best outcomes for the patients. A little bit about my background, I am a certified public accountant with over eighteen years of experience in planning, development and execution of effective strategies, policies and procedures that improve financial and operating functions of healthcare organizations, both in hospitals, physician groups and other medical service settings. One of the focuses of my career has been to execute action plans to drive continuous improvement of the healthcare facilities I work with and for. One of the keys for any healthcare organization to be successful is to involve all the stakeholders, the board members, the medical leadership, administrative and clinical staff, community leaders, as well as providers in providing the most successful outcomes. And we've done this in this particular case very well. A copy of my CV is included in the application on pages fifty six to fifty nine. The second piece I would add is a lifelong learner and someone who has dedicated my career to healthcare. I really do take the initiative to keep abreast of healthcare management best practices and evolving trends that support patient-centric care, quality and safety, while at the same time being mindful of financial performance. This is best accomplished by providing opportunities to educate frontline workers and deliver effective presentations to influence key internal and external stakeholders to again meet the needs of the community and also continue facing the healthcare challenges by providing excellent care and an excellent environment. A little bit of background, in two thousand and eighteen, Trinity Health of New England Strategic Plan identified the Enfield market as a key market to expand and modernize its ambulatory offerings. This was based on reviewing population growth, median household income, pair mix changes, disease incident rates and projections in clinical service demand based on the population emerging in Enfield. This strategy resulted in a refresh of the Enfield campus, including the rebuild of the Johnson Memorial Surgical Center. After further review of the industry and local trends, it was decided that the surgery center would be most successful in reaching its goal as a joint ventured outpatient-based ambulatory surgery center. The building is set to be completed in May of two thousand and twenty four and a go-live date of July two thousand and twenty four. This plan includes the rebuilding of four existing operating suites into a new state-of-the-art ambulatory surgery center on the Enfield campus. Investment in our ASC will better meet the needs of the community, improving access to low-cost, high-value surgical care. This initiative supports the health system's preparation for the shift of care from inpatient to the outpatient care setting. The current operating rooms are undersized and outdated, and we're very challenged fitting in state-of-the-art equipment in those operating room suites. The development of the new ASC will support larger expanded outpatient procedures such as orthopedics, spine, and it will also significantly improve the workflow for the providers as well as the patient experience overall. So to provide additional detail, the proposed center will better meet our community needs in the following ways. First, increased value. So as part of the mission, Trinity Health of New England seeks to provide people-centered care. The proposed project will transform the patient experience by providing convenience to the patients in terms of ease of access, scheduling and location. The new ASC will be co-located with Johnson's outpatient imaging on the first floor and plans to have medical office space built out in the future. This will allow our patients to receive most of their outpatient care in one location, both imaging as well as the ambulatory surgery. And it will offer a lower cost alternative to hospitals for outpatient surgeries. ASCs provide patients greater value through increased patient satisfaction and improved outcomes. The second area would be physician alignment. Physician ownership will incentivize physicians to provide low-cost, high-quality care to our patients. This will result in a value-driven operation. Further, physicians who practice at the site will have the opportunity to increase their productivity due to the increased efficiency of the center and their direct involvement in recruiting and training staff. This will provide the benefit to our patients through improved patient quality and also enhanced efficiency. With those improvements, the ASC will serve as an attractive site of care as an alternative payment model continues to develop in Connecticut as the shift from the hospital base to the outpatient setting. The final point I would make to the committee is the industry trend. The proposed ASC complements the industry trend of joint ventures between physicians and hospitals. The project in general alignment with Trinity Health of New England resources, processes, sourcing and initiatives. While the majority of low-cost surgeries are outpatient cases already, the project aligns with the industry trend of gradually shifting other procedures to same-day and dedicated outpatient settings. The services that are currently provided at this surgery center will continue in the new ASC. And aside from that, from oral surgery. These services include general surgery, gastrointestinal, gynecology, obstetrics, colorectal, ophthalmology, orthopedics, pain, podiatry and urology. The new service that will be provided also includes total joints in our state-of-the-art OR built out for orthopedic procedures. The impact of patient care of establishing a freestanding ambulatory surgery center will increase access to surgeries and surgical resources in multiple specialties for those in primary service area. The proposal improves access of healthcare in the region by accommodating the expected volume and the growth of outpatient surgical procedures. Due to the limited capabilities within the current Johnson Surgery Center, there are many barriers to keeping up with the expected volume due to the outdated design of the operating rooms, the size of the operating room, and also the support spaces needed to take care of the patients in a effective and efficient manner. The newly built ASC will improve both operating room utilization and efficiency and be adaptable for growth, including items like orthopedic surgery. The new designation would provide the same care in lower cost setting than as a hospital satellite location. The largest patient population is currently being served by the Johnson Surgery Center. Patients from the service area will continue to receive care, and there are no anticipated reductions in service or patient population because of this proposal. As it is currently the practice, potential patients will continue to have the choice of using this surgery center or other providers in the service area. Currently, outpatient surgical procedures are provided at the Johnson Surgery Center. The operating rooms and the equipment are outdated, limiting the ability to perform all appropriate outpatient cases at the center. The current center was never designed to accommodate the mix of procedures that are now being performed in an outpatient setting. Over the years, great effort has been made to keep the facility up to date. However, the operating rooms have become increasingly limited to today's cases. As an example, some of the surgical towers do not fit in the operating room today due to limited space and ceiling heights. The proposed center will be designed for the efficient delivery of care and meet the growing demand of outpatient surgical services. This plan increases utilization of the current four operating rooms by the newly recruited surgeons and the shift of appropriate outpatient procedures. The current location at one forty eight Hazard Avenue serves as an integral access point for patients in the greater Enfield area. It will continue to be the only ambulatory surgical facility in the area, and the new center is being built adjacent to the current location. It's also fiscally prudent to build on the existing site since Johnson Memorial owns the land and currently operates other clinical services in the adjacent building. The most recent Community Health Needs Assessment completed by Johnson Memorial Hospital in two thousand and twenty-two includes healthcare survey information from those in Johnson Memorial. Residents shared that the cost of healthcare services is a major factor in not having healthcare coverage or accessing care. If you look at attachment eight for Johnson's Community Health Needs Assessment in FY twenty-three, the Johnson Surgery Center had one thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight patient encounters, of which twenty point two percent are insured by Medicaid. By establishing the current hospital outpatient location to an outpatient surgery center, this removes the facility fee and more closely follows the lower ambulatory outpatient rates compared to our H O P D rates. The community will continue to have access to care now at a lower cost, and this change will increase access to care by helping to reduce the financial burden faced by patients seeking surgical services, including Medicaid. Over the next ten years, SG two projects outpatient surgery to increase by ten point two percent in the Enfield market. Both general surgery and orthopedics, among other services not relevant to this proposal, are serviced lines with the highest demand and projected growth. Under-served groups will benefit from the proposal because it creates a lower cost site of care in a town with disproportionate share of poverty. Having this option will increase access to lower cost care and look to reduce the financial burden faced by patients seeking outpatient surgery centers. This center will be on Johnson Memorials and Field Campus, and it will be again to access those members of the community. If approved, the proposed surgery center will increase access by adding surgical services not currently offered at the current ambulatory surgery center. The ASC has been designed with the patient experience in mind with better design space, calming decor and finishes, wider space, larger base for the patients. The clinical space was designed to provide the utmost efficient surgical care through improved patient flow, modern pre and post surgical areas and modern high-tech operating rooms. Additionally, as previously mentioned, the proposal will the proposal will improve access by offering a low-cost option that the original site had, which included facility fees. So in conclusion, approving the certificate of need for the termination of the hospital license at Johnson Surgical Center and concurrently for the establishment of an outpatient surgery center will allow Johnson Memorial to replace the services of the Johnson Surgery Center with a modern and more efficient surgery center licensed as an Ambulatory Surgery Center Joint Venture. Technically, there are no services being terminated in the market, just the replacement of the hospital operating designation with an ambulatory surgery designation that will provide additional services. In my professional opinion, this decision will not only improve patient care in the primary service area, but also offer many, many benefits to the community itself. Thank you for the opportunity to testify here today in support of the Certificate of Need application that we are discussing this morning. Thank you, and we will open it up to any questions.
Before we open it up to any questions, just to make sure we have a clear record. I know you went over most of your written prefiled testimony, but I I believe we skipped the step where you formally adopted the actual written prefiled testimony, so I just want to be, have a clear, clean record and ask you, do you formally adopt the written prefiled testimony that you submitted in this case?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney DeBassio. I was planning to do that myself, so I appreciate that.
I apologize for usurping.
I also noticed in her testimony that she made reference to the Community Health Needs Assessment from two thousand and twenty-two. I don't recall seeing that as part of the record. So I'm going to take administrative notice of that document. Attorney DeBassio, do you have any issues with me doing that? I know it's publicly accessible and-
No, Your Honor, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. So did you have any other preliminary comments you wanted to make, or did you want anyone else to make any preliminary comments?
No, thank you, other than just to indicate that all of the witnesses are available to answer any questions OHS may have.
Okay, thank you. I think we're just gonna jump right into it then. And the first question I have is sort of a technical clarification. Is the application to establish a facility with four ORs or three ORs and then add an additional at some point within the next couple of years?
I can answer that. Hearing Officer, this is Claudio Capone, C A P O N E, Regional Vice President of Strategic Planning and Business Development for Trinity Health of New England. The proposal is to take the four licensed OR beds that we currently have at Johnson and shift those over to the new facility. We are going to open with three, and at some point, as volume increases, we'll, we'll look to open the fourth.
Okay, thank you. So building on that, what would be the threshold, the specific threshold that needs to be met in order for JMH to open the fourth OR?
Typically, when you get to above eighty percent OR capacity and we're having difficulty scheduling, is when we would look to open the fourth OR.
Okay, and you expect that to occur within the first, I think you said, one to two years? Is that correct?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay. So the statutes for CON are, are sort of interesting because they allow an entity to increase their OR capacity once every three years. So is there a reason why you're seeking approval for four instead of three and then opening an additional one in, in three years?
It's simply that we wanted to just continue with the four that we had licensed and move those over. We didn't contemplate filing the CON as a two or three OR ASC. We, we looked at it as, let's take the four that we have currently licensed and convert that to the new proposal.
Okay. And as, as part of the the plans for this facility, is there space for a fifth OR? Are you currently building as if a fifth OR will be part of this?
There is no space for a fifth OR. It's being built to spec four ORs.
Okay. Thank you. So just shifting focus a little bit. One of the statutes, Section nineteen A dash six thirty-nine A sub five states that a CON is required for the termination of services by a hospital. I know technically you're not terminated any, any services. You're just moving them from one facility to, well, technically two others, one to the hospital, and then one, most of the other services to this new facility. Some of the questions from, we, we have a supplemental termination form. Some of those questions do, would apply here, and I just want to run through those a little bit and, and have the witnesses respond to those. So the, the first question I had is question one B on the form, and it's to explain the process undertaken in making the decision to terminate the services from the hospital license and then move them to the new entity. So what was that process like? And anyone can respond to that, Mr. Capone or Ms. Bisoli, Dr. Ruse.
Do you mind identifying which page of the document you're looking at? Sorry.
I don't have it in front of me.
And can you restate, restate the question then, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up, but the, the question is, what was the, what was the process that was undertaken in making the decision to terminate the services from the hospital license and move them to the new facility? From sort of an administrative perspective, I would say.
We were following what we, we did with our other surgery center, similar process where we had existing ORs at St. Francis and converted them over to the Lighthouse. Today, today it's called the Lighthouse Surgery Center. And we followed the same process there because that was the process we were told to follow during that similar conversion of hospital-based ORs to now freestanding joint ventured ASC.
And did, did that process start with the two thousand and eighteen facility plan? I can't recall the exact name of it, but-
Sure, it predated it.
Okay. So did it require a vote from the JMH Board of Directors? And that, that's another question on that supplemental form. Did the termination require a vote of the JMH Board?
The, the board serves an advisory role, so they did advise on the matter and did recommend it to the Trinity Health of New England Board for approval, yes.
Okay, so Trinity, the Trinity of New England, they voted on it and they approved it?
Correct.
Okay. So typically, what we do is we request that those, the minutes from that meeting be produced. So Attorney DeBassio, what I'm going to ask is that the minutes from that meeting and any other, you know, relevant meetings be produced as a late file?
That, that shouldn't be a problem, other than I'm not entirely sure what you would be looking for when you talk about any other relevant meetings or minutes.
If, if there are any other votes other than the Trinity of New England vote to approve this, like if there was one required of the, the mothership, so to speak, the, you know, the main Trinity?
No, I understand. You're just looking for minutes related to the vote to terminate at the, at Johnson and transition to the ambulatory surgery center.
Correct.
Got it.
And we will go over all these late files towards the end. That way, there's just a clean list, and I'll also issue an order either later today or early tomorrow that, that identifies them as well.
Thank you.
So I know Ms. Bisoli spoke about this, but I just sort of wanted to break it down a little bit. What are the advantages of this proposal specifically to patients?
So let, let me start a little bit. I think there's three areas that the patients are going to benefit. The first would be just a state-of-the-art environment. The area that the patient would be in pre-surgery is much larger. It has walls around it, so the existing environment is just a much, much better environment. I think the second way the patients benefit is the ORs are state-of-the-art. They're actually larger. There is equipment today that exists that providers need to do particular types of surgery where they need a larger operating room to be able to accommodate that surgery. So this will allow us to do those surgeries in the setting. And then I think the, the last way the patients benefit is there is a shift from insurance carriers really asking to do surgery in an outpatient setting where possible, and it translates to less dollars that the patient has to pay. So I really do believe there's an advantage to the patients and the community in Enfield as a result of this, and I'll open it up for Rob if he'd like to add anything to that.
So just for the, the group, Dr. Robert Ruse, R O O S E, President, Johnson Memorial Hospital. Thank you, Debbie, for your comments and the question. We've highlighted several of the advantages for patients, which include experience, which include state-of-the-art abilities to operate and receive operations in a new environment. And I would just, and the value that's delivered to the patients would just continue to add that this emphasize, this, this surgery center emphasizes access and expanding the array of procedures available for the community. And so patients will directly benefit from procedures being delivered in the surgery center that are not currently able to be delivered in the existing surgery center as well. So access, a value, and experience, both from a direct as well as from an environmental perspective.
Thank you. Building on that a little bit, Ms. Bisoli mentioned there were some surgical towers that can't currently be fit in your, your current operating rooms. Which towers, would those, which services do those towers pertain to specifically?
Those towers would pertain really to some of the larger orthopedic cases. And again, it's just due to the size of the older operating room. So they're also more forward compatible with procedures that we're going to add to the ambulatory surgery center in the future.
Okay. So backing up a little bit. Now, as I said, I wanted to break it down a little bit. So what are the advantages of the proposal to Johnson Memorial Hospital?
I will speak to that. Johnson Memorial Hospital's Enfield Campus is an incredibly important part of our services that we deliver to the community, both in Enfield but also Stafford and the surrounding cities and towns. And so strengthening the services that we provide in Enfield, which continue to be expanded, both with a renovated and expanded cancer center, the development of the Ambulatory Care Center on the Enfield Campus and other ambulatory services will enhance the, the performance and the level of care that Johnson Memorial Hospital provides to the community. So it will enhance the environment both for direct care like imaging and lab and other ambulatory services, but also provide a stronger connection to the hospital for referrals of patients that need a higher level of care to be provided in the hospital facility itself.
And are there, are there any advantages to Trinity Health of New England that are separate and apart from the ones that you just described with respect to JMH?
I think there, I would say that they are part of the same advantages in creating a, a network that provides value to patients in the community and engaging in a joint ventured ambulatory surgery center in strengthening the campus of services, both hospital-based and ambulatory in Enfield, strengthens Trinity Health of New England as a primary service area that we are looking to meet the needs of the community.
Thank you. And last grouping, what are, what are the advantages of the proposal to the physician members that are going to be part of this new entity?
I'll, I can start and then invite others to make comments. As a, as a physician and all of us that work closely with physicians know that patients come first, and the experience that can be delivered to provide that service to patients is the top priority. So physicians that will align with this surgery center will have their focus on quality of care first, on expansion of access to be able to provide services in a top-class environment, and also on efficiency. And so to align in a way that delivers value, so quality over cost will be the physician's primary motivation. So it will align incentives within our healthcare system to deliver on those promises. Physicians specifically will be looking for a place in the community where they can meet the needs of their patients and bring different types of procedures into the Enfield community, as mentioned, total joint replacements and other types of procedures in a way that will be the best experience that can be provided.
And Daniel, I would only add, we have done multiple walkthroughs in the new Ambulatory Surgery Center, and the first place the providers, physicians, want to go to is the operating room. So just the lighting, the size, the aesthetics, the layout. They're just very enthusiastic, as Dr. Ruse indicated, about going in there with their patients because it is going to be a better experience for both them and the patients. So a lot of enthusiasm and excitement about getting in there to actually do their cases.
And can I, can I also add, one of the things that we're working with as we build this, this center is having the physicians' input from ground level. Many of them have been involved with decision-making on equipment, layouts, lighting, posts and, and pre-recovery. So we, we've taken an approach of inviting them to be part of the process from early on.
It, it sounds from what you're saying that, that the group of physicians that is expected to be, to have member interests in this facility have already been sort of, has already been solidified? Is that a correct understanding?
Not yet.
Okay.
Still in flux.
Have most of them been identified?
We have most of them identified. We have a, a core group who we know are going to perform cases there that have been involved with the design.
Okay. Have any of them signed any sort of like contractual document that says we're planning to be, we're planning to have membership interest in this facility?
Not at this point.
I may have more questions on that in the future as, as we get into things more. I have to, I have to think about it, but I wanted to continue with some of, some of the questions that are on that supplemental form that I mentioned earlier. So question two F asks about migration of patient medical records. How will that process work? How, how transitioning those medical, the existing medical records work over to the new facility?
So I- So I would ans- would answer that to say that the existing medical records are part of Johnson Memorial Hospital's. Health information management system, and they will remain there as long as statutorily required and be accessible to patients that need those records. Um as we uh open up new services for records that are needed to be transferred in. To other systems, we would arrange for either the integration through interface. Uh access for those records or an alternative process by which they will be available for. Providers and patients uh as would be required by uh regulation to make sure that that happens. Depending on the specific example, that may uh look different. Uh and so providers, for example, in the new. Ambulatory surgery center that would need access to orders and or lab images will have them present. And readily available and accessible for them. Prior records uh would be available through some of those means as described as we. Uh evaluate and set up those processes closer to start date.
It, it sounds like what you're saying is there won't be an, an additional financial cost for data migration. Is that correct?
I can ask if Claudio has any assessment on that as a part of this project, but that's not my understanding.
Uh there is no projected additional cost for, for data migration. It's um. The, the EMR that's going into the ASC um will provide. Uh will, there'll be a connection with our, with our Epic um being able to port. Um data over from the visit, but then physicians, as Dr. Rus has mentioned, have access to our Epic. Um it will continue to have access to Epic and they can see the patient's information through uh the various um portals that Epic provides.
Okay, thank you. Trying to pull up the form because in my notes, I have indicated that there's a question I want to ask and. Having trouble making sense of it, so give me a moment. So on, on that supplemental form, um question three B asks about additional costs to patients. So I understand that there will be a lack of hospital facility fees, and that's a major benefit to patients uh from a cost perspective. Are there any additional costs to patients that will be added by moving this over to the new facility?
So you're asking whether or not um. There, there'll be any additional costs from doing cases at this center to patients?
Correct.
No, no, there are no, no additional costs. Um. I guess let me, let me, let me ask. Like what additional costs are you thinking about? I mean, they will have the cost of doing the case, but there are no additional costs uh beyond that.
Okay, that, that answers my question. So. I'm not sure if, if the witnesses are, are able to answer this question, but I, I will ask it. Um do any of you happen to know if the current facility is considered hospital-based? Under Connecticut General Statutes nineteen A dash five oh eight C sub A sub seven?
I am, I cannot speak to that specific. Statue. And without seeing that statue.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I didn't think that would be the case. I just wasn't sure how, how to get to this. Um. And do, do any of you happen to know if CMS has determined that the existing facility is considered? A hu- a part of a hospital campus?
I, I can answer that. Excuse the uh fire alarm that's going off in the background, so I apologize for the extra noise. Um. But um they're, they're running a test here. So the current center is operates as a department of Johnson Memorial Hospital. Um and so it, it operates as a hospital department.
Okay.
It, it is a campus of the hospital.
Correct, yeah. It's a campus of hospital, correct.
Isn't it possible for Trinity or JMH? To opt not to charge a hospital fee, hospital facility fee right now?
I, I, I am not clear if that's an option that we would consider based on our policies and procedures.
Does anyone have anything else to add to that? So. Question four A, in that supplemental form. Talks about historical and projected utilization. So. I, I understand that oral surgery is going to be moved to the hospital. Do you have any sense of what um the projected utilization for oral surgery will be in the coming years?
I do not have the numbers uh present in front of me. Claudio, I don't know if you do.
Yeah, we would have to uh get to, get those to you in a late file.
We could submit that in a late file if you're looking for specific numbers. In conversations, we have not anticipated that volume significantly changing, and it is not a. Particularly high volume current.
At, at the current facility, I, I think it actually is relatively high. Um I think it's like the second or third most utilized service at that, at the surgery center. So similarly, um. I think the. Question four B asks about um payer mix for. Services that will no longer be offered, that will not be transferred. So um. I would like a, a late file of that as well, um projecting forward. Um probably about five years for oral surgery. So I'm going to move off of the supplemental uh termination form and. Start talking more about the, the CON criteria themselves. I'm going to start first with uh the idea of clear public need. So in several locations, the applicant has stated that it plans to start with three ORs and then open up a fourth as demand increases. Um you've also provided some SG two data that Ms. Spitzold actually referenced in her, in her opening statement. So is there not currently a need for four ORs in the service area?
So at, at this point, the demand is not for, for full hours. You're, you're correct. Um but in the future, we do see demand rising to the four within the next couple of years.
Okay. Um and do you have any sense of what will change between the first and second year? That will result in having the sufficient demand to open the fourth?
Sure. So part of it is recruitment. Um there's some of the physicians have mentioned to us. Uh second to that would be growth in, in the conversion of. What's being done currently in the inpatient setting that's going to the outpatient setting. Think of joints, for example, you're seeing more and more joints. Moving over to the outpatient arena. Um and those are some of the drivers that we uh are using to project the use of the fourth OR.
So. I want to go back to talking about oral surgery for a moment. Um in page thirty-one of the application, it, it's. It does seem to make up a large volume of the services currently being provided. Um if you were to bring that over to the new facility rather than send it over to JMH, wouldn't. You have sufficient volume to open up a fourth? Or let me phrase it differently. Would you have sufficient volume to open up the fourth uh from the beginning?
I believe those cases are done, um Dr. Rus corrected if I'm wrong. I believe they're done more in the procedure space than the OR itself.
Yes, and I think we'd have to look at that uh and. We'll have to get back in terms of what that looks like in terms of numbers in future years.
Okay, and you've said you'll be providing that as a, as a late file. Okay. So why, why is oral surgery being moved to the main campus? When all the others are being moved to the new facility?
It, it was determined to uh move oral surgery over to the main campus because it, um because of the way the cases uh operate. In terms of uh utilization of, of rooms. Um the, the types of procedures that, that they are doing. So. Uh we determined to move that over to the hospital side to continue uh providing that service. Uh probably better, better suited for those types of cases.
Are you able to speak in more specifics? I, I'm sorry, that was just a very sort of generalized. Response.
Yeah, it's just um, a- again, just to, I don't have any more specifics outside of that, but when we looked at oral surgery, that was one of the ones that. Just based on the type of cases that they're dealing, you know, removal of, of abscesses, uh some jaw work, things like that. Um that those cases would probably be better suited, not in the ASC setting, but moving over to. To the uh Johnson uh main campus. There has been conversation about potentially moving it back to the ASC, but at this point, when we filed the CLN, the decision was made to move it over to the campus.
And those oral surgeries will continue to have the hospital facility fee attached to them?
Yes.
So some of the. The, the application states that you're going to be starting uh neurosurgery and total joint services at the new facility. Why neurosurgery?
Question was why neurosurgery? I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Sometimes the alarm is very loud in here. I apologize.
I, I can't hear the alarm for, for what it's worth. So but, so thank you for reminding me that, that, that you have that going on.
What, what was the question?
Yeah, the, the question is what, why, why are you planning to start neurosurgery rather than some other service at uh the new facility?
Uh we have interest from a couple of uh of our uh neurosurgeons. Who want to do some of the, the spine cases that, that have now moved to the outpatient arena. Um that they're currently seeing patients from the greater Enfield market, uh either doing them down at, at St. Francis or doing them up at Mercy. And so um it'd be much more convenient for those patients to be serviced at, at Enfield uh to new surgery center. Um and as uh Mrs. Petolli mentioned earlier, the, the space itself today is not really conducive to having. Um neurosurgery cases uh done there in, in a efficient manner. So. Uh that's why we wanted to um add neurosurgery cases to, to that location.
So you are currently offering it at the hospital though, and you're, you're planning to move it to the ASC setting? It sounds like.
We are, we are seeing patients from the Enfield market. They're being done either at Mercy or mostly St. Francis.
Okay. I think. Let's take a five-minute break, if everybody is okay with that. Um. I want to speak with the team about a couple of things. Um so let's plan to come back at ten fifteen.
Daniel, muted.
I am muted. I apologize. Um. So there were a couple of follow-ups to uh some of the questions and statements that were made earlier. Um one was concerning uh oral surgery. Um are there any? Mr. Capone, you, you spoke to sort of the, the clinical aspects of like, and the clinical reasoning for wanting to move it over to JMH. Um are there any non-clinical reasons, uh financial or otherwise, to, to want to move it to the main campus?
Yeah, I think the other, the other main reason um is that since this is going to be a joint venture. The physicians are, are leading us into what, what makes the, the right complement of services um that go into that center. Um and uh you know, with a brand-new facility, with the capabilities to add neurosurgery. You know, decisions that, that were being made were to um take care of oral surgery at the hospital. But have neurosurgery move in and a- adding additional orthopedics. Um and really that's being done in concert with the, the surgeons who are looking to invest in the center too. So. Um there is that collaboration with them, so.
Um of, of the surgeons who have. Informed informally uh that they plan to be, have membership interests in the new surgery center. Um are any of them? Well, I guess I know the answer to that. Um. Pri- prior to deciding to move it over to the, to the main hospital, did any of the cert- those, the oral surgery surgeons? Uh express interest in becoming part of the, the new surgery center?
Yes, they, they, they did. And um a- after speaking with them, um. Um we're still e- leaving it open that, that they can do cases there in the future if, if that's um. Um advisable by the, the governing body of the, of the ASC. Uh but for the time being, they, they refine going over to, to doing cases at Johnson. So. Um there is an opportunity for them, is what I want to say, to, to potentially come back there, if that governing body uh approves it.
All right. And. Ms. Bitzoli earlier mentioned uh plans to build out the medical office space in the future. Um I was wondering if that could be fleshed out a little bit more. What, what exactly is meant by that?
I, I can uh jump in on that. So um not really identified in the CON clearly is that this is a two-story facility. And the, the top floor is the ambulatory surgery center. The first floor is a medical office building. Um that is replacing some of the medical office space that's in the adjacent uh building uh at one forty-eight Hazard Avenue. Um half of that first floor, this is not the ASC, this is the first floor medical office space. Is uh currently um vacant, and uh we're looking at opportunities to uh move medical practices there. Uh and the other half is the replacement of the existing imaging center that is uh literally right next door. Uh we're moving that into this space as well. That's remaining as a hospital-based function. Uh it's just moving. That side over.
Okay. And. Something else just occurred to me. Um. Earlier, you mentioned that, that you had identified a number of physicians who had expressed interest in having membership interests. I think you used the word most. You've identified most of them. Do, do you have a sense of how far away? You are from reaching the, the number that you want?
Uh we're actually actively working on it in the next couple of weeks. We will know more.
So you don't, you don't, if I were to ask you for a number, like how far you are away from. The, the key number that you're looking for, you, you aren't able to offer that at this point?
Uh it would, it would not be accurate, uh hearing officer. I would, I would, if you give us a couple of weeks, there, there's a deadline for them to get back to us.
Okay.
So it's actually the thirty-first is the deadline, so.
Okay.
Then we'll know.
Going to move on to utilization questions. Specifically. In the application, in response to question thirty-nine. You provide some utilization figures that show sort of some unusual results. I was just hoping to take them one at a time and develop an understanding of of. What may may have been driving those differences from year to year. Um so the first one is the surgery center went from performing three hundred and thirty-six GI surgeries. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two to seven hundred and twenty-one GI surgeries in twenty twenty-three. Um so that's essentially a doubling in the amount of GI surgeries from one year to the next. I was curious if if you had any insight as to where that came from?
Uh your honor, before before my my um my client's answer, I just want to convert, do do all of you have? Access to the Khan application and can pull it up on your screens when we're going over these questions?
I I don't attorney actually at the moment, but.
If I if I send it to you, couldn't do with that?
That that should work.
Okay. I apologize, your honor, but usually doing these live, I could I could point to my binder to Dr. Bruce and say, this is the page we're talking about. But since we're doing it remotely, I just don't want them working in a answering these questions in a vacuum, so to speak.
I understand, um and the. So maybe it makes sense to to move on, because the next couple of questions I have uh refer to specific pages in the in the application. So. Let me see where I can go next. Um so Ms. Ms. Bitzoli said earlier. And uh it was referenced in a in a couple places in the record, uh one of the benefits to patients. Uh of the new facility is that they will be able to be treated at a facility closer to them. I was wondering if that could be explained a little more, because my understanding is that the. Existing facility is directly adjacent to the proposed facility, so how is that a benefit? It it seems like it's the same to me.
Yeah, I'll actually take that one, um I think that that comment relates to the fact that. Because the rooms in the new ASC are larger. Um we're now going to be able to do more procedures in those larger OR rooms where we couldn't. In the current ASC, so I think the advantage to patients is. Procedures that we can't do in the current ASC, we will be able to do now in the new ambulatory surgery center. And that's going to offer them uh the ability to stay local and infield.
Okay, that makes better sense, thank you, I appreciate that. Do you all have access to the application now? Specifically, page thirty-one?
Net file attorney to basket did not open for me, I'll have to, I I am having some technical difficulties on my. Outlook today, I will say, so it may it may be that. Um so I'm not able to.
Doctor Cruz, I just I just sent it to you in another in another format.
Okay, let me try that.
I'm wondering if I can share my screen. Steve, Annie, do you happen to know if I'm able to do that?
You should be able to share a screen, if not, uh fake and give you access to that.
Alright. That might be the easiest way to do this.
Doctor Cruz, did that email work?
I haven't received yet, actually.
Yeah, I'm just I'm just concerned with the size of the the application through the. The um.
Yeah.
So can you all see my screen right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So. The question I asked earlier is. Uh the surgery center went from performing three thirty-six GI surgeries in fiscal year twenty twenty-two. To seven twenty-one surgeries in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. That's right here. I was curious if you had an explanation for for that jump.
Audio, do you want to comment on that, would you like?
I I'd have to go look at the um the the data behind it, Dr. Rus. Trying to do that in a different screen here.
Okay.
Similarly, in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, you went from three thirty-nine ophthalmology down to ninety-five. But in the prior year, you had done three thirty-three, which is roughly equal to three thirty-nine. So I I was wondering what accounted for that large jump as well?
So I could I I can speak, you know, generally speaking, and if there's more detail that's needed, we could provide in late file. At times, with the surgery center and the hospital. Both operating as hospital departments and two campuses of Johnson Memorial Hospital. There have been uh decisions made by providers and or. Administrative leadership about the best place for certain types of procedures. I E. the hospital at in Stafford Springs or the surgery center in Enfield. Gastroenterology, for example, endoscopy procedures, not surgeries per se, but procedures. Have moved out of the hospital setting in Stafford predominantly to be done in. More outpatient environments like the surgery center, albeit still a hospital department. Over years, and actually, as we anticipate the future, there are less and less um. Payers willing to provide general screening and doscopy procedures even in a hospital department. And so therefore, moving to a model like an ambulatory surgery center is critical to be able to maintain access for patients in the community. Conversely, um ophthalmology during the period of construction. There was a need to move ophthalmology cases back to the hospital. Out of the surgery center for the concern of vibrations in the local environment that would impact the quality of care. Due to the microscopes and the technical procedures needed to be done. So while they would I predominantly be done in a uh ambulatory setting. Outside of a traditional hospital. In fiscal year twenty-three, we needed to move many of those back to the Stafford campus. Because of the construction that was occurring on the Enfield campus. To allow for those procedures, and then we are in the pro- we have we have since in fiscal year twenty-four. Moved them back towards the surgery environment, so those are two examples of. Decisions made in partnership with physicians about the best place for the procedures to be done in those cases.
Okay. And. I also wanted to ask about this. Difference here as well. Orthopedics went from three fifty-four to two oh eight, and then it sort of remained relatively stable through. Even the current fiscal year. So do you do you have any explanation for that?
So I I'll let Claudia come comment if there's further, but the. The shift of orthopedics out of hospital-based departments into ambulatory surgery centers. Is a very strong industry trend. And. With that, um has come also some provider changes over years recently in fiscal year twenty-four. Retirement of an orthopedic surgeon as well, who is operating at the surgery center. The excitement uh in engagement of orthopedic surgeons. Currently, as we look forward, is hinged upon there being an ambulatory surgery center environment. That is outside of the traditional hospital environment. To be able to drive efficiency in and uh. Grow regrow that volume in that community, so there are kind of two factors at play uh with orthopedics. Which is an area of growth and tremendous community need, of which the new surgery center would be able to fill that gap. To which would reverse the trend here, which has seen those services. Uh move away from the Johnson Surgical Center specifically.
Um do you do you have any understanding as to where the surgeries are moving, what facilities they have moved to? If not, the surgery center?
Audio, could we comment on that, or?
We'd have to look into, I'm assuming we're talking about the 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 lead orthopedic surgeon who was there who announces retirement around this time and started to uh. To wind down his practice as we look to uh add additional orthopedic surgeons from Mercy, uh Dr. Rus um. So I I don't have exactly where they're going, um hearing officer, just I. We'd have to look that up.
Where this question is going is there there seems to have been a decline, and then there's a very large jump. With the advent of this this new facility up to, you know, over a thousand uh by fiscal year twenty twenty-six, so. I'm just questioning whether that is actually attainable and. Um if so. You know, what? How how are you confident that this number will be obtained?
It's the recruitment of additional orthopedic surgeons that are coming in to do cases here, that currently are doing cases um. In either Massachusetts or or in Connecticut, so at the. At the time, I believe there was one um dedicated orthopedic surgeon in that market who has announced his retirement. There's been another surgeon over the last couple of years who started picking up cases. Um but the balance of what you see here on this screen is going to be those additional surgeons. Who are not doing cases at this particular surgery center. Uh there's a couple of new surgeons to the market that have just been recruited uh by private um. Orthopedic groups that are affiliated with Training Health New England that are also uh bringing cases uh to the center. So it's really, it's really a staffing increase of the number of orthopedic surgeons.
Okay, and those physicians that you speak of have indicated that they'll be. Signing on for a membership interest in the new ASC?
They've all indicated they are going to do cases there.
Okay.
We're still working through the the membership.
Membership component, okay.
And then just going back to your GI question, I did get some data, it's a. Going back up to the previous uh s- page there thirty-one. That increase seems to be, and I'll have to give you an LA file why. But it seems to be um one of our um lead GI. Uh physicians um had a pretty significant increase in volume from twenty-two to twenty-three.
Okay. Going to stop sharing my screen for a moment, actually, no, I can probably do this. So right now, I'm showing you. Uh the completeness letter response. So this refers to. Page thirty-two of the application, so I'll I'll pull that up. So by the end of. So from fiscal year uh twenty twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh based on these numbers, you're projecting a growth of forty-two percent. Which considers volume change over three years. And that's a. That's a calculation that that we performed or the analysts performed. Um based on the numbers that you have provided, so you're projecting uh a forty-two percent increase in volume change over the three years. If you compare only fiscal year twenty twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-six. The projection actually jumps up to a one hundred and eighty-four percent increase. So the question that I have based on that, actually, I have a couple of questions, the first one is, given the nationwide healthcare worker shortage. Uh and your noted difficulty in recruitment and retention. How can you be assured that you will be able to service uh this volume?
Can I just interject, when when you ask about their noted difficulty with recruiting and retention, are you referring specifically to the difficulties they've had with labor and delivery? Because I don't believe some memorials really on record as having other difficulties in terms of recruitment and retention.
In the transcript that was provided, that was from the the OB and the the labor and delivery. Application, but they did speak in general terms with respect to, and I can pull up those pages, it's the. I think it's the last three page citations that were provided in that. In the notice and request for compliance.
You're referring to Dr. You're referring to Dr. Rus' testimony.
Correct.
I could certainly speak to, um there are stark differences in the. Ability to recruit and retain workforce in settings such as these. As opposed to some settings that are. Some other settings, uh and so the. An ambulatory surgery center setting uh such as this, which comes with. Generally speaking, Monday through Friday. Uh work hours with no on-call services that maintains. You know, quality and efficiency is a highly attractive place for worker workforce to be part of. Um there are certain settings in hospitals or otherwise that come with um on-call requirements. Or are in more remote rural rural locations. Um where recruitment and retention can be more challenging. That being said, there have been remarkable efforts to engage and grow. Services in those areas as well, to which there have been some successes, and yet there are still some major challenges in others. With the, I will just say comment, with the interest in this particular surgery center. There have been has been a significant level. Of. Staff that have expressed interest in working and do not see that recruitment as a barrier to us achieving. In meeting community need.
Has Trinity had any issues recruiting and retaining uh? Any healthcare workers with respect to their other ASCs or hospital outpatient departments?
I'll let I'll let Claudia comment if there was any challenges in in recruitment that was. Noted in the other ambulatory surgery centers or ambulatory areas, but generally speaking. Uh our outpatient areas have been well-staffed.
Yeah, so for uh we have one ambulatory surgery center. Uh in Connecticut, um the Lighthouse Surgery Center, which. Uh has not had challenges recruiting, as a matter of fact, has done pretty well at at recruiting staff um for all the reasons that Dr. Rus. Uh, has mentioned.
So. You stated in, uh, Ms. Bitoli, uh. Bitzoli, excuse me, uh, stated in her profile testimony that, and earlier as well that SG two projects, uh. Outpatient surgery to increase ten, ten point two percent in the infield market over the next ten years. And the question I have about that is, how do you reconcile this with your projected? Figures, either a forty two percent increase by fiscal year twenty twenty six or a. One hundred and eighty four percent increase by fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Yeah, so I, I'll answer that, so we use SG two to um complement the projections going forward. Um, so we took SG two's growth rate, so that's what's applied year over year, plus what the interested surgeons were, were bringing. Uh, based on conversations with them, with the volumes that they see, uh, that they could bring to the center, so, but that's how we use SG two as sort of the. Uh, calculating the, uh, first of all, to ensure that the demand is there, but second of all, to calculate the increase year over year.
If you don't see the, the, the expected increase and it's more in alignment with the SG two numbers, do you, would this be a sustainable? Facility, if it was only a ten point two percent increase over the next ten years?
Uh, we haven't run the numbers, looking at it from that perspective, um, hearing officer, um. It's not something that we've done, so I can't answer that question.
And. I, I think I would want that as a late file. And. When you, um. So you, you just mentioned that you were looking at SG two plus the, the physician volume that you expect. Um, for the physicians who are going to be doing uh procedures at this facility. Have they provided any data to reflect their, the amount of volume that they would be bringing? Mostly. Has it just been sort of verbal, like off the copper?
Most of it, most of it has been verbal conversations with them, understanding what, what volume they have, and then we, we discount it, um, and then. I mentioned in the application that we cross-reference with our claims tool, just to ensure that, um, they're not overstating numbers.
Okay. So it, it sounds like a number of these physicians are already part of the, the Trinity Network, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you do have a way of verifying that one way or the other?
Yeah.
And then just, just to clarify, Your Honor, I believe, uh, the highlight of point Mr. Capone just made. When they do that very verification, they apply a discount rate as well. Just to make sure that these projections are going to be uh more in line with what they can actually expect as opposed to. You know, under perfect conditions and you see a hundred percent of that come over, so even when they do get those numbers from the claims. You know, cross-reference with SG two. These are not a hundred and ten percent numbers, these are conservative numbers based on a, an analysis of those two figures, correct, Mr. Capone?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
This is Annie Fiala, um, member of the OHS staff, I, I have a couple of questions. It was said that. You have, uh, the most of the physicians identified who will have share, um, in this joint venture. Are all the physicians going to have equal shares, or are they going to have various level of ownership percentages?
So like, like any other ASC, um, uh, typical ASC, what, what you would see is they would own up to a certain percentage, so. In aggregate, they will own forty nine, up to forty nine percent, individual surgeons. Um, can buy up to, um, typically two percent. Um, I think it's five percent, I'll have to double check, but I think it's five percent. Uh, per each surgeon at the max.
So, but, but it is possible that each surgeon will have a. Different ownership amount.
Yes. It, it'll vary between that, that too, like I mentioned.
And then my other question is, um. I, I know you mentioned that most of these surgeons are already part of Trinity, um. Are you, are they exclusively working with Trinity then?
Um, the, the private community physicians, some of them are not exclusive to, to Trinity. They may have relationships at other freestanding ASCs, or they may be doing work at other hospitals, many physicians, as you know, have privileges. Uh, not just at Trinity, they might have privileges elsewhere, um, so.
So what then, with that being said, the number of, or the, the volume that you're projecting to come from these. Surgeons. Is this their total caseload or the caseload that they have at JMH already?
It's a combination of what they had at JMH, plus any growth that they saw. Some of them bringing in new providers or new colleagues, so there's growth baked into that.
So then there is a potential that some of that volume isn't going to be at JMH, it might be at another ASC location that they already have, that they have privileges at.
It, it could be, we did not ask them to identify by case which one is coming from where.
Okay, thank you.
And then. Building on the, the question Annie just had, um. You state that some of the current caseload is sent to Johnson Memorial's main campus and some to St. Francis. Is there a difference in the types of cases that are sent to Johnson Memorial versus St. Francis?
I'll, I'll start there and ask Dr. Rus to jump in, but all the inpatient cases obviously are done at, at Johnson or St. Francis. Um, and in any, any case that is not deemed. Um, safe to do, any outpatient case is not deemed safe to do in an outpatient surgery center like the current Johnson Center. Uh, because of comorbidities or, or technologies that are needed, then those are done, um, either at. At, um, Johnson or St. Francis or Mercy, depending on where the patients come from, let's start to Rus to add to that.
I, I think that explains it, and uh, if there's more specifics on that question, please let me know, but. Capabilities at either facility, if the patients are not, the needs are not able to be met in an ambulatory surgery center setting, then they will be done in a hospital and. If the capabilities are there for them to be done. Uh, at Johnson Memorial Hospital, then we would look to do them there based on patient and provider preference, and if, if not, then St. Francis Hospital Medical Center.
Okay, thank you. Give me one moment. It, it was stated earlier that, um. Physician ownership will incentivize physicians to provide low-cost, high-quality care to patients. How does physician ownership incentivize lower cost?
I, I can start there and, um, so typically what you see in, in ASCs, um, when you have physician ownership. Being an owner, they're much more sensitive and involved with decision-making, understanding the impact of. Sometimes purchasing equipment that, that might not necessarily. Serve all the needs, but might be costly, that the cost need to be passed down to the patient or. Or making choices that are not really efficient for the whole surgery center, so having physicians. Uh, take the lead, uh, on that, specifically those who own the surgery center and have a, a vested interest in it. Uh, we've seen in, not only in our local ASC, but some other ASCs. Um, throughout Trinity Health and other organizations that have been more successful in having more efficient, um. Turns of their patients, um, better outcomes, better quality, um, it's really letting, letting the physicians lead that. Uh, especially those who are owners and have that interest. I don't know if Dr. Rus, if you have any.
I, I think you articulated it well, um, it, it aligns. All of the, uh, individuals involved in the care, particularly the, the surgeons and physicians. In ensuring that the environment is of the highest quality, but one that is operating. As efficiently and as clinically oriented as possible, so to limit, you know, any, uh. Extraneous costs or. Services, uh, that aren't directly focused on the patient, uh, and that helps lower the costs and ensure that access is met.
Are, are any of you aware of any, um, like peer-reviewed? Articles or anything that, that support that contention that physician ownership drives lower costs?
We would have to do a search, I don't have anything off the top of my head, um. Hearing officer, at this point.
Similarly, the, are you aware of any? Documents that support the claim that it incentivizes higher quality?
Yeah, we, we would have to, uh, do a search and I don't have anything that comes to mind, uh, at this moment.
So we, we can indicate that those are late files and to the extent that you're able to provide something to support those claims, I think that would be helpful. I understand that you don't have anything in particular in mind, so if, if it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, we'll have to take your word for it.
Yeah, we're just, uh, my response is based on performance of our existing surgery center and other surgery centers at. Other organizations that I've worked at or part of Trinity Health, so we have seen. Quality and performance improvements.
And I would just add, just, um, the other thing we know is by getting the key stakeholders involved in it at the table. Um, when the provider or doctors at the table in the dialogue. Um, what we typically do see because they're a key stakeholder is outcomes are better.
And I, I would also note attached to the con, um, at, um. Page seventy five, I believe, is an article from the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons that discusses this very issue.
Okay, thank you. On page twenty three of the application, the applicant states that the average cost for a commercially insured patient. Will drop from eight hundred and sixty four to five hundred and eighteen dollars as a result of the proposal. I was wondering what? What accounts for that drop, is that solely the, the hospital facility fee, or are there other factors involved there?
Uh, that's primarily the facility fee, um, that's driving that, that decline.
So you say primary, primarily, are there other factors, or is it just the facility fee?
Uh, there, there could be in there, and it depends on the case, it really depend on, um, the type of equipment being used, the. If it's a total joint, you know, the types of screws, I mean, what, what's being charged to the, to the patient. Um, the centers typically will, will look to maximize, uh, the efficiency of, of, uh, which. Which, uh, equipment they're using, uh, as well, so, so those costs do not get passed on to patients. So it would depend on, on the case, uh, hearing officer, we'd have to identify. Beyond just the facility fee, which would be universal, universal on this, it would come down to, um, the individual case.
I want to turn our attention to financial feasibility now. Um, we have already asked some questions about that, but the, these will be more pointed and more specific. So, with respect to the organizational structure that you've decided upon, uh. You indicated in the application that you had considered. Uh, a few different joint venture partnership, partnership options, one included, uh, an ASC management company. Why did you decline to go that route? Was it simply that you didn't want to provide an equity stake in the center, or were there other factors?
So there's, there's two factors to it, one is that, um, that we, we chose, um. Not to provide an equity stake, and then the second is Trinity Health itself is building. Uh, that function, um, they've hired, um, an ASC leader. Uh, who's building the management, uh, component, um, as we speak. And, uh, will be, this will be one of the first sites that she will be overseeing and, and helping us, um, manage, so. And that was, uh, that happened after the C O N was, was, uh, was filed.
Okay, and what benefits do that, does that offer over, um, having an ASC management company involved?
Uh, the only benefit would be the ownership stake at this point in time. Cause we haven't really costed out them, is, you know, is there a significant difference in the management cost? Uh, it's really just the ownership stake at this point, so having Trinity own fifty, fifty one percent versus having to, um. Have a management company own a certain percentage of it. And it's something our physicians were also interested, uh, as well.
Okay. On pages forty three and forty four of the application. There's a number of physicians who are identified by specialties, uh, they aren't identified by names. Um, can you just talk a little bit more about why those were listed there and how they were identified to be listed?
Now, what the question asks, provide a number of physicians and their specialties that will utilize the new outpatient surgical facility, so we went ahead and. And listed, um, the breakout there of, of physicians. Uh, by type, you know, attempting to answer that, that question, we, and we kept their names blinded for, um. Confidentiality at this point.
Okay, and those are. Essentially the, the, the ones that you expect most of them will want to have a membership interest at this new surgical facility?
That, that's correct. This makes up, this makes up, uh, almost the whole list, yeah. It ebbs and flows, it changes as you can imagine, so.
So the name of the, the new facility will be Enfield Surgery Center, correct?
That's, that's the, uh, proposed name, yes, the filing.
Okay. So. And I noticed in the operating agreement that it says. Trinity's name will not be associated with the facility unless it gives authority to do that. I was just curious if there's a reason why Trinity doesn't want to have its name specifically within. The surgery center name, or maybe I'm misreading that, and I, I'm happy to pull that up if, if it would be helpful.
Yeah, if you don't mind pulling it up, that'd be great, so I can reference it.
Let's give me one moment.
If it's page thirteen of the operating agreement?
Yep. It's this section here.
Yeah, that is uh that's standard um language for our joint ventures from Trinity Health. So in this case, if they wanted to use. Trinity Health in in the name of the surgery center would have to be through uh prior written consent.
So we we talked a little bit about voting rights earlier and how those will line up with the membership interests. I know that. It'll be one hundred and two unit uh membership units for Trinity and ninety-eight for the physician members. Uh and then the governing board will be made up of six individuals, two representing Trinity and four representing the physicians. Do the voting rights line up directly with the membership units?
There are reserve powers listed in the in the uh governing agreements such as um. Uh impacting our not-for-profit status or 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 uh. Our Catholic E R Ds um amongst some of the things there um.
Generally speaking, though, if um. For for all other cases other than the ones that you you just identified or you know that are specifically identified in other parts of the operating agreement. If. The two Trinity uh members were to. Vote for in action and then the four physician owners were to vote against it. Uh the Trinity votes would. Would overtake the the physician memories, is that correct?
I I believe it's it's subject to the the topics at hand. There there are. Yeah, I'd have to look at the reserve powers again.
Okay.
The intent is that we we run this as a physician-led organization. But um the 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 reserve powers were critical for us um because of those things that we wanted to preserve that I mentioned before.
So Trinity Health of New England has three hospitals um. Do you expect that this will cause any sort of shortages um at the other hospitals by people wanting to move? Um or perform all their services at. This new surgery center versus Lighthouse. Or one of the other hospitals?
We we don't anticipate um having that effect right now because those cases are. Are being done at Johnson for the for the most part um. It would it would just be speculation that, you know, for me to say that Lighthouse would be impacted per se, I I wouldn't know.
Okay.
And and again, as you know, um employees and staff can move freely. If they wanted to leave that organization and 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 go work at uh at the Enfield Surgery Center um at their own. At their own wish, they can do that if surgeons want to bring cases there. Again, you know, it's driven by the surgeon and the patient agreeing to do cases there, so we're not. It's hard to speculate whether or not there's going to be uh an impact.
And I may need the the analysts to help me out with this, but um. Somewhere in the application, I recall reading it it said. Outreach to certain physicians, or excuse me, outreach. Had been done to surgeons who expressed interest in working at J M H but chose not to. I was wondering if any. Reasons had been provided by those surgeons for why they didn't want to work at J M H.
Sure, so some of those is because of the layout of the facility. Um they couldn't do cases because they couldn't fit their towers in or um they were facility-based. Um or hospital-based, excuse me, and there was a facility fee and they were getting denials and so they chose to bring their cases that they were doing at Johnson elsewhere. Um and some of the other um items that they brought up is just the efficiency of the center. It's. It's dated now, it's built in the eighties. Um it's it doesn't have all the technology that they see in other or or that they need um. To do cases or they've become accustomed to newer newer technology, so. So um those are the reasons they gave that they stopped doing cases at at the Johnson Surgery Center.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have on those organizational sorts of issues. Excuse me. Keeping with financial feasibility and and costs and and that sort of area of questioning, though, I wanted to talk a little bit about. Um construction and the the progress that has been made on the facility. Ms Bitoli said earlier and in her prefiled testimony that um. It's nearing completion. I was wondering uh first, when did construction actually begin?
But doctors, I'm sorry.
No, are are you aware of of the date when it began?
I I don't recall the exact date that we we started. Debbie does.
I don't know the exact date, Claudio.
Do you know what year it was? Maybe we could try to narrow it down a little bit. I know that that the plan sort of was concocted in twenty eighteen as part of that, you know, um. Services plan or I can't recall what what it was called, facility plan um.
Yeah, uh it I'll have to um. Give you that information in a late file because there's several phases. We started with the cancer center. I remember that starting a couple of years ago, two years ago or so. That's when the cancer center started. That's part of the. What we call the Enfield Campus uh Revitalization Plan. Um and that was completed in in August of of last year. That was um. That was that piece of the project, the A S C M O B. Uh started months after that. I just don't have the exact date of what that started.
Okay, so we we can take that as a late file. One more question on that, though. Do you happen to know whether it was before or after you filed the C O N application?
It was before.
Okay. So how far along is the facility at this point? Um Ms. Bitoli said earlier, it's projected to be done this month. Is that still the case? And if so, when?
It is still the case. Um we expect to get the certificate of occupancy um next week.
Okay, so it sounds like it's already done. You just have that one last administrative. Component to to bring about.
That's right.
And is the project currently on target with its projected capital expenditures? Or now that it's essentially done, it has a, is it on target?
The the A S C. So the A S C, I I'd have to cross-reference the seventeen million that's in there, but it has, there have been some inflationary overruns. Um because of the cost of construction going up. I'd have to double-check that seventeen million if it captured that increase because that happened. About a year ago, a little bit over a year ago is when inflation started impacting the cost of the of the A S C and and. So just that you're aware, it's a little complicated because it's it's three projects all in one. And the C O N was filed for the A S C, the the Cancer Center, the M O B, the Imaging Center and an A S C. So you have. You have multiple projects all rolled up into one uh construction budget, so I'll I'll have to peel that out.
Okay, um I think we would like that as a late file as well. So. Keeping with that topic, a a large part of the financing for this facility was supposed to come from those physicians who were. Um going to have membership interests in the new A S C. Since those haven't. Since those. They haven't been come contractually obligated and they haven't put in their their money into the project yet. Um how has that been funded? That component of it.
Through Trinity Health.
Okay. Um and how will? The reimbursement work? The the physicians will just pay instead of paying the money into the the L L C? The Enfield Surgery Center, they'll pay it directly into Trinity, sort of to repay Trinity?
They'll pay the L L C, the L C will repay Trinity.
Okay. Will there be any sort of uh? I don't know why there would be, but uh will there be any sort of interests or 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 fees that will be? Put onto that, okay?
There's there's done.
If the application is not approved. Uh what would be your intentions with respect to the building that has been completed?
It would it would operate as the current Johnson Surgery Center as the H O P D.
Okay. So you would still. It would still be the H O P D as just that everything would be moved over to the new. Entity, the new uh facility? And what would happen to the old facility?
That needs to be torn down.
Okay, so you're not planning to repurpose it? It's just going to be torn down and?
It it's it's passed its useful life at this point, so we're gonna. Look to uh it needed to be renovated, so rather than renovating, we'll we'll tear it down and it'll it'll serve as a parking adjacent to the building, making it much easier for patients to get in.
Okay. So we wanted to talk more about. The funding. Actually, let's take another. You know, five-minute break or so. Um let's come back at. Eleven twenty. Um and again, uh well, let me just say uh for anybody attending uh from the public. Sign up for public comment is happening right now, so if you do want to make. Uh a statement, you can provide your name in the uh in the Zoom chat. And then we will allot you some time at twelve o'clock to make whatever statement you have. Uh we're also accepting written public comment through concomment@ct.gov. So and a reminder to everybody who's here is that uh. Anything you say or do will probably be visible on camera, even though we we will not be recording, so just keep that in mind. Thank you. We'll see you back at eleven twenty. Welcome back. This is the matter docket number three-two-six-nine-two. So Johnson Memorial Hospital's application to establish a new A S C Enfield Surgery Center. A reminder to the public again that uh public comment signup is occurring right now. If you would like to make a statement at twelve. You're free to do so as long as you sign up in the chat box. We're going to jump back into the technical portion of today's hearing for right now. Um and the next set of questions are going to talk about uh funding sources and and things along those lines. So the first question I have is. So the application lists a capital expenditure of seventeen point eight million. In response to the hearing issues. Uh J M H stated that seven point two million would be coming from Trinity Health and Physician Partners. So where is the remaining ten point six million coming from?
It comes from Trinity Health Corporate.
And you made mention of uh ten million being tenant improvements under the lease. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Those are the the fit out um furnishings. Equipment just to uh to run the site, so that's being um added on to the lease. Um like standard practice, you can either pay it upfront or pay it overtime. Um in this case, we we have it being paid overtime.
Okay. There were some attachments that I sent over a few days ago to a notice and request for compliance. Some of those were were uh applications by Trinity regarding the ten million dollar donation from Presley Blake. Um which was earmarked for the establishment of a new ambulatory care center in Enfield. Um can you describe how that factors in here to this project and this proposal?
Mister Blake's donation is um for the for the uh corn shell. Uh some of it goes to towards the corn shell, not the A S C, so it's not it's not being used for this A S C. The total project is a much larger cost than the seventeen million, so. Uh he has a, his family has naming rights for the cancer center, uh which we've already used and um. Naming rights on the uh facility that the A S C is going to be housed in. And um so so his donations are going towards supporting that and. On the first floor, he wants a uh he wanted a memorial to, he's the founder of Friendly, so he wanted a memorial to the to the Friendly's um. Uh business that he founded on the first floor, which is not in the A S C.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand this a little better. Um. So you earlier projections said there would be a total investment of seven point seven million. With three point nine coming from Trinity Health and three point eight coming from the physicians. And then you just said. The remaining, you know, ten million or so was coming from Trinity, is that correct, Mister Capone?
It's being paid upfront by Trinity, but that's the, I believe that's the tenant improvement that you're seeing spread out over time.
Okay, so that's why it was broken down in that way?
Correct.
Okay. So the three point nine is not considered tenant improvement, that's just an upfront payment?
That's the that's the buy-in to the existing um. When I say existing center, it's the new center. So it's the it's the value of 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 the equipment that is coming over from Johnson. We're reusing equipment to save money. So there's there's that equipment that's coming over, for example. Um to to the new center and so there was a fair market valuation on done done in that equipment. And the business itself, and so that that equates to the the dollar amount that you see there.
Okay, thank you. So on the break.
Sorry, I I missed some part, the legal fees as well and some of the consulting work is a is a past due cost as well. I I I missed that, so that that makes up part of that. Of that dollar amount.
I understand that lawyers have to get paid, so. I appreciate that um. So when when we took that five-minute break, uh we looked at the the H R S, the Hospital Reporting System Financial Report. Um for twenty twenty-three and J M H listed uh. Over twenty-three million for the construction of the Enfield Ambulatory Surgery Center. Is that? In line with what your expectations are with respect to the inflationary increases?
I'm not familiar with that, what that twenty-three million dollars is. I'm I'm sorry, I'm not. Not involved in the H R S reporting, so I'm not sure what that entails.
And might I just clarify that? Ambulatory Care Center and Ambulatory Surgery Center are not synonymous. They're not the same thing. So Ambulatory Care Center represents a broader array of services than the Surgery Center. If that is to make sure that that's clear, the Ambulatory Care Center. Is inclusive of other services on that campus, which were part of the larger campaign that. Which were part of the larger campaign that. Claudio was referring to, so. Without having the. Submission. In front of me to reference, if that was referencing. A cost for more campus related renovations and capital investments. It was broader than just the surgical center.
Okay. Um, we'll take a look at that, we'll, we'll try to identify, uh. Or determine whether it it applies more broadly to the the Ambulatory Care Center versus the the Surgery Center itself. So I I think we'll have some more questions about that, but I'm I'm going to move on to right now, I've I've asked one of the analysts to to take a look at it. I I think this is. Um, sort of been addressed at a couple points up until now, but I'll I'll ask the question anyway, um. Doctor Roos, in the. O B termination docket, uh, you you testified that, quote. The sustainability of hospitals in the current healthcare environment is one that is being considered. Right now, there are many hospitals, Johnson Memorial Hospital included, for which financial sustainability is a concern. Uh, and then he went on to confirm that L and D wasn't the only cause of financial distress. And that you could not comment on whether J M H was planning to terminate other services. So that's. In. For this docket, exhibit O. Bates pages one sixty to one sixty one. So. Given your your prior testimony, can you explain? How? The use of the monies for this project, uh. In which you will, J M H will only have a fifty one percent interest. Is in the best interests of J M H long term? Or Mister Capone or or anyone else, it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, specifically.
The ca- the Enfield Campus is an incredibly important part of Johnson Memorial Hospital. And the. Success and the growth. Of services in Enfield. Connect very clearly. To the performance and success. Of the hospital campus in Stafford Springs. As they are connected, uh, as they are related. Um, and as they are part of the same entity. So. Recognizing where healthcare has shifted from inpatient to outpatient. In developing a state of the art campus, which includes multiple services, including. A state of the art surgical center. With a. Opportunity for growth. And to best meet community need. Will continue to. Make Johnson Memorial Hospital stronger. The proposal itself then thus is not expected to have any negative impact on the viability of the campus in Stafford. And. The performance and. The growth in Enfield will strengthen Johnson Royal Hospital overall.
Thank you, we did. Pull up the H R S filing and it says the twenty three million is. Dedicated specifically to construction of Enfield Ambulatory Surgery Center. So.
We may have to take that under advisement and. Provide comment in a late file to ensure that that was accurately designated, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So those are. I believe that's an audited financial statement, so. We can. We we took administrative notice of that, but we we can supply you with a copy as well, um. Actually, let's take a five minute break and I will. See if I can pull that up, that way you can, you can have that available and try to make some sense of it. Um, so let's come back at eleven forty. Of. Everybody. Um, welcome back, this is docket number three two six nine two. Uh, it's a hearing regarding uh, Johnson Memorial Hospital's proposed. Establishment of a new ASC in Enfield. Again, public comment signup is going on right now, it'll continue until twelve. Um, currently, we don't have anyone signed up. I. Went off the record a moment ago to try to figure out whether uh, any. Questions could be asked regarding the the twenty three million in the the H R S filing. Uh, I think. The better approach will be to make that report one hundred from the hospital resource. Or hospital reporting system part of the record. And give uh, J M H an opportunity to respond to it. And explain. The the price increases. Or the expenditure increases that have occurred, um, rather than try to ask pointed questions about it right now. So, we will sa- I, uh, Attorney Di Basio, I will send that to you after the hearing by email and we'll also make it part of the the hearing record as well. Does that work for you?
Yes, that works for us. And and I think that, I think that's the right approach, given that. There is some confusion about where that number came from and sort of unwrapping it in a public hearing like this is just gonna probably lend itself to more confusion.
Yeah, I I don't. I'm not interested in conjecture, I'm I'm just interested in actual. You know, verifiable information. So with that, uh, I don't have any more questions, uh, the analysts also do not have any other questions. So, we're going to break until noon. Uh, actually. Attorney Di Basio, did did you want an opportunity to respond to any of the, um. Testimony that it was given or any other questions that were asked?
No, not at this point, I'd just like an opportunity to make a brief closing statement before we go to, before we take a break and go to public comment at noon.
Okay.
I believe that, I believe that's the way the agenda is.
Yeah, that's the way the the agenda is, um.
I'm happy to hold that off until after public comment, if that, if that pleases the hearing officer.
I I think that would be a better use of our time, I wanna go through the uh, the late files with the analysts and make sure we have those solidified. Um, and we will run through those after public comment too. And then we can do your your closing statement.
That's absolutely, I just wanted to be clear based on the agenda, I wasn't waving that right.
I I appreciate that, thank you. Um, just a reminder to the witnesses that um, you are expected to remain with us until after public comment, assuming there is any public comment, um. So. I will see everybody back here at twelve.
Can I just ask a quick technical question, I apologize, I didn't mean it. If we're coming back on a twelve, if we all log off, can we use the same link to log back on a twelve, or should we just leave this link open? With with the laptop and muted?
You can log off and log back on using the same link.
Okay.
Thank you. Recording? Welcome back, for those just joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing concerning a C O N application filed by Johnson Memorial Hospital. It's docket number twenty three dash three two six nine two dash C O N. Uh, we had the technical portion this morning. Uh, public hearing or public comment signup started at eleven and ended at noon. Uh, we have not had anyone sign up. So, there will not be any uh, public comment made at today's hearing. However, it, for anyone watching. Or for anyone who watches this after the fact, you're free to submit written public comment. Uh, up to seven days from today's date. Uh, to C O N comment at C T dot gov. So now, I'm just going to go through. The late files. And then we will take a a closing statement from. Uh, Attorney Di Basio. Uh, the witnesses are free to leave or they can. Stick around if they'd like, it's entirely up to them, but we we will have no further questions of you unless uh, your attorney. Has some additional questions for you. So, Di Basio, can can they be relieved or?
Yes, I can, I have no additional questions.
Okay. Uh, actually, maybe the. I shouldn't have said that, uh, we may need them for the for the late files, just to to provide some additional clarification. So. The first one I have is the meeting minutes relative to the decision to terminate. Uh, Johnson Surgery Center. And establish the new facility. The second one. And again, I will put this all in an order, uh, so that you have everything itemized, the second one is five years of projected utilization for oral surgery. Oral surgery, excuse me. Along with, uh. An explanation of the projections. Five years of projected paramix for so- oral surgery. That's number three. Number four is. Analysis and explanation of whether using. The S G two ten point two percent volume increase will be financially feasible. Number five is. Professional publications and or support from Trinity's other facilities. That physician ownership incentivizes lower costs and better quality outcomes. Number six is date on which construction of the new Surgery Center began. Number seven. Is updated breakdown of costs to include inflation. Number eight. Is. Uh, a reconciliation. Of the capital expenditure in H R S report one hundred. That's the twenty three million. Versus the proposed capital expenditure listed in the application, which was the ten million. And that's the construction cost specifically. And then. In reference to. Connecticut General Statute nineteen A dash five oh eight C. This will probably something, probably be something more appropriate for Attorney Di Basio to respond to, but whether the existing facility is considered. A hospital based facility. Under that statute. And any determination by C M S as to whether the existing facility is considered part of. J M H's hospital campus. As that is defined under the statute. So. Those are the late files as I have them listed here. Uh, Attorney Di Basio, is that consistent with your own records?
In consideration of everybody's. Time here, I have numerous pages of notes, uh, would it be more appropriate to get your written order and then if I believe. One of them is, was not discussed, I can object at that point. Rather than have everybody sit here and watch me read through.
Yeah, no, that's. That's fine.
I can't, I can't say that as I, as I, as I read through your list, that seems to be the whole. Realm of everything that we talked about in terms of late files, but without going through my notes. Particularly, I can't say definitively that that's what I have in my notes.
I understand. Thank you.
And just in terms of housekeeping, and you may be getting to this, and again, if that's so, I apologize for curtailing it. Do, I believe we agreed that that H R S report that you cited is is that's gonna become part of the record as exhibit Q?
Uh, I don't know what letter would be assigned to it, but it it will become part of the record.
But the next sequential. Whatever letter it gets assigned, it's the next in the sequence.
Um, yes.
Yes.
And also. Uh, I mentioned this at the start of the hearing, but I I I know that you filed the motion to seal or the motion for protective order, I I haven't opened it yet, so I don't know. How you framed it. So, I'll need to rule on that. And. I'll, that'll be forthcoming.
Um, so. And we, we discussed, we we understand that O H S may call us back for either executive session or if you deny the motion to brief hearing. If there're gonna be any questions on those documents as well.
Okay. Um, so that is all I have at this time. Uh, Attorney Di Basio, you are free to make a closing statement if you would like.
Thank you, just briefly, uh, we were here today for the certificate of need application for the termination of the hospital license at Johnson Surgical Center. And concurrently for the establishment of an outpatient surgical center. Johnson Memorial Hospital is seeking approval to convert its four operating room licensed surgery center located at one forty eight Hazard Avenue, Enfield, Connecticut. From a hospital based outpatient department to a freestanding outpatient surgical facility located adjacent to the existing site. Technically, there are no services being terminated in the market, just a replacement of a hospital outpatient department surgery center with an ambulatory surgery center. That will provide additional services. J M H is requesting approval to restructure the ownership of this ambulatory surgery center to a joint venture. Known as the Enfield Surgery Center. Trinity Health of New England will own a fifty one percent majority ownership and physicians will hold the remaining forty nine percent membership interest. The current Johnson Surgery Center is outdated and is outliving its useful lifespan. Therefore, a replacement ambulatory surgery center is being built and is placed directly adjacent to the existing site. The replacement ambulatory surgery center will be licensed for the same four operating rooms and two procedure rooms. At the start of business. Three operating rooms will be operational with a forthcoming online as the demand increases. This new state of the art ambulatory surgery center on the Enfield Campus will better meet the needs of the community. Improving access to low cost, high value surgical care. This initiative will benefit the community in the following ways. It will increase value and access for our patients. It will complement the industry trend of low acuity inpatient surgical cases shifting to outpatient settings. It will provide expanded surgical care at a modern efficient surgery center. And it will complement the industry trend of joint ventures between physicians and hospitals, improving physician alignment and engagement. I wanna thank O H S and its analysts for their time and attention. And I wanna thank the representatives of Johnson Memorial for their testimony and their time today. And we would respectfully submit that this certificate of need should be approved as it benefits all of the stakeholders in Johnson Memorial's primary service area. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. It was brought to my attention that there is one more housekeeping matter that we need to address. Um, when would you like the late files to be submitted, or when do you think you'll be able to submit them? That, that may be up to your, your clients, if you'd like to take a few minutes to discuss, we can go off the record and then come back.
Why don't we say three weeks and we can move for an extension of time if that's not enough time? I know my, I know my clients don't wanna overly delay. The whole application process, but I don't wanna put them on the spot in terms of. Meeting a deadline they can't make.
I, I'm fine with three weeks, um. So, I I'll say three weeks, and if you get it filed sooner, then you gotta file it sooner.
Well, then, obviously, we'll do our best to get it as soon as we can.
Uh, and if you do need an an extension, that's also fine as well, I I don't wanna foreclose that as an option.
No, and and I appreciate that, I just know that. Uh the the my witnesses working at the hospital, their their attention is pulled in many directions with many. Urgent matters that uh they have to address, so this is certainly at the top of their list, but I know that the day to day business of their operations is also. Very time consuming.
Okay, well, thank you all for attending, uh thank you Mister Capone, thank you uh Doctor Roos and Ms Bitzoli. Uh thank you as well to Attorney Di Basio and thank you to everyone else who was in attendance today. Uh a reminder that written public comment can be submitted up to seven days. From now at C O N comment at C T dot gov. Uh this hearing is hereby adjourned, but the record will ma- will, excuse me, will remain open until closed by O H S after receipt and review of the late files. So thank you, everyone, and uh have a good day.
Thank you.